Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Everybody's here. We'll call the Rockingham we're getting to order. I'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I'd like to add the webinar on August 20th for explanation. Where would I add that, Chris?
Just for, I would say you could put it under, put it under unfinished business or discussion.
Okay. Just add this D.
Six, C6.
That'd be new business, right?
Right.
Or not unfinished business would be new business?
It'd be, yes, it would be under.
Okay.
Eight, new business, discussion, action.
Let's just put it under.
Be.
Just at the end, J.
Eight, J.
J. Okay. Um, no one else? Okay, um, are there any communications and public comments?
I have two, Priscilla.
Let's see if there's anyone else out there first.
We don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, um.
Hello.
Jack?
Yeah.
Hi.
Um, I'm speaking as a community member, or sort of a community member, because I live outside of Rockingham. I just wanted people to know that the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District passed a resolution to allow remote learning among their, amongst parents and, and students. In your district as in ours, there's been a lot of controversy about with some parents threatening to take their kids out of school if masking is not universal and if there aren't vaccine mandates. Others have threatened to take the kids out of school if there are vaccine mandates and universal masking. And we felt that by stepping up and offering online education as an option, allowed boards, our board, to bypass the issue and to to conform with the state guidelines without further controversy because nobody's being forced to do anything if there's an option out there. And we thought it was a good one and want to make certain that you all were aware of it. And I was tasked to speak to you, so here I am doing it. So, good luck to all of you as you proceed tonight.
Thanks, Jack. All right, anyone else?
I see no other interest.
Okay. Jason, you had a letter or two you wanted to read to us?
Yep, actually I have three. One, I won't read because it was read at the Westminster Supervisor Union Board Meeting. It was from a parent who was against masking. And this letter is from another, I have another letter, an email that we all received as board members. And this email is lengthy, so bear with me. I know you had a meeting last night regarding the reopening of schools and that the mask topic is one of the concerns for all of us. I just read the article by WCAX here. Another parent's thoughts regarding this situation are extreme. I would bet her opinions are not shared by the majority of parents. They work at a very busy place of business. We do not wear masks. If a client would like to wear a mask, that is completely up to them as we respect everyone's choices and comfort levels. The fear expressed in the article is both unnecessary and sad. Regardless of what side of the fence you're on, the fact remains that if a person contracts COVID, there's a 99.7% or possibly even higher at this point chance of survival. The fact remains that the majority of deaths are elderly people and are people who have underlying conditions, not kids who are young and healthy with strong immune systems. It's seen that many people forget about the statistic. It seems that many people think that if they're vaccinated, they cannot get COVID. Not true. It seems that many people think they are vaccinated, they can't spread COVID. Not true. It seems that many people think if we, if they get COVID, they're automatically going to die. Not true. Each of us takes risks each day. I decide every day whether I want to get in my car. The chance of me getting into a car accident is greater than dying from COVID. We make decisions to fly in planes, jump off cliffs, into a river, drink alcohol, et cetera, et cetera. The list goes on and on. We each have the right to make our own risk assessments within our lives. The concept is also applied to COVID, how each of us view it for ourselves and our families. As we all have a different set of variables. As I stated, 99% survival rate is contracted if I get COVID. I personally do not believe I'm going to die, nor do I think my kids will die. We all are very healthy. We take vitamins, eat a healthy diet, don't smoke, aren't overweight, have no underlying conditions, and exercise regularly. Does that mean we won't believe COVID is real? No. Does that mean we don't practice safety? No. For me and my family, the fear of dying from COVID is not present. The data supports the fact that it is unlikely that me, my husband, or my kids will die from COVID. Sure, there are always unique cases in any virus, but generally speaking, the info suggests members of my family are not at high risk. I think the majority of families in our district would also fall under very low risk of death due to COVID, based on facts and statistics. However, I realize people might have a different fear risk assessment for themselves and their families, and that is their right. Consider those facts and statistics. It doesn't seem to make sense to disrupt our kids' lives again with such a low risk factor. We all take risks every day. It's called life. There's more data to suggest, show that kids are at extremely low risk of dying from this. And they're showing the opposite, yet the kids are the ones being made to suffer the most. They have already lost a year and a half of normal things. They got robbed of, weren't a cloth over their mouths. All day is not healthy or necessary. I don't understand this concept. Johnny and Billy are together all summer, no mask. When Johnny and Billy go to school, they have to wear a mask all day. After school, Johnny and Billy get together and go to kindergarten with no mask. And no one else has a mask on anywhere else either. How? How is this helpful? It makes zero sense wearing a mask in school but nowhere else. As far as vaccinations, this is a personal and private health decision, and it should remain that way. Regardless of anyone's opinions on this, the fact remains that this is not FDA approved. And at this point, it's not required as a necessary vaccine to attend public school. Some people view vaccine more of a risk than an actual virus. With that said, people's health choices should remain private. Branding unvaccinated kids by forcing them to wear a mask is an infringement on privacy, and forcing them to do so would be disclosing their personal medical information for everyone to know. I think that would be an illegal issue. Is vaccine passports for public school for a drug that isn't, isn't even FDA approved? Does that sound crazy to you? We're not Nazi Germany, and unvaccinated kids should not be singled out and shamed. Not okay at any level. Again, being vaccinated does not put anyone in a safe law bubble. You can still get COVID if you're vaccinated. You can still spread COVID if you're vaccinated. The purpose of the vaccine is to help symptoms not be as severe if you get it to get the virus. If you believe in a vaccine, whether or not someone else is vaccinated should not be concerning you. The way unvaccinated people are being treated is downright discriminatory and hateful. And I absolutely do not expect our school boards or schools to take part in this kind of behavior. What is the end game here? The government has not indicated the end goal. Is it to have zero cases? Because that's never going to happen. The media focuses on case numbers, not deaths. They fail to report that death rate is still going down. And that deaths are far less than they were in January, February, March. Yes, this Delta variant seems to be more contagious, but it's less deadly compared to the common cold in that regard. This is out of control, and life needs to resume. Did you know that they test that they've been using the entire time has been recalled? Why? Because they determined it can't be, it can't decipher between COVID and a flu. It has been recalled, but we still use it to test until December 31st. Things are out of control. Information's being manipulated, and it has worked. People are no longer using common sense, and our kids should not be punished because of this. The people who are in charge make these decisions, are scared, and it's not fair to the rest of our kids. If parents want their kids to wear masks in schools, but they are fearful of COVID, then that's their right. But please don't want the other kids to suffer and have con, conform to those who are fearful. It should be a personal choice. Our kids have already suffered enough. That's that email. And then, um.
Thank you to the person that wrote the letter in for us to think about.
And the other email is basically echoing the same. And the person is threatening to take the kids out of the school system. Do you want me to read the whole thing also?
Since you read the other one, probably.
Okay.
Being sure that if they don't want to be known who it is, that we don't share that.
Got it. Dear all, I'm a mother of two in a WNS school system. I grew up in New Hampshire and moved to Vermont. After my undergraduate year at Plymouth State, went back to Plymouth to complete my graduate degree, and then moved back to this area with my family. I'm not sure what the mask decision is for the start of 2021 school year, but I do know that my daughter is forced to wear one all day. I will not be sending her to WCS for her fifth grade year. This breaks my heart, and she has been there since kindergarten. My son is an eighth grader at the middle school. I don't think mask-wearing all day is healthy for anyone, especially our children. There is no such data to show there is no benefit over the cost of wearing one unless it is very close contact, dentist or doctor. Masks are sponges for germs, and we are not meant to breathe our own mouth bacteria in all day long. Children in a school setting lack the power of authority to get fresh air breaks when needed and therefore suffer. Imagine if you could step outside or remove your mask when you felt it necessary. Also, imagine if someone yelled at you or you were given the consequences for your actions you did. Children should never have to consider consequences of their actions if they're just trying to breathe. Because our small community size, most of these children have been interacting with each other all summer long without a mask, both inside and outside, and again during the school year, after hours and on weekends. The virus's aerosol particles easily has to call off a paper mask. And children sitting in a classroom all day with each other will be breathing in each other's respiratory germs regardless of masks. So, I think. If all adults that want to vaccinate, if want the vaccine, have had one, then why are they so concerned? The data shows this virus has a very low mortality rate for children and also that they are not major spreaders, so why mandate? If the parents of the children want them to wear masks, then by all means, they should not, they should be allowed. What others should be able to choose. Furthermore, the issue of vaccine mandates is extremely troubling. Why would we even consider this at this point in time? Given the FDA approved this tomorrow, we still would not have any long-term data on safety. We already have thousands of reported adverse events and deaths associated with this vaccine. Thousands of FDA-approved drugs have been recalled. In fact, more than 8,000 since 2013. The most recent being Xantac. It's been on the market since 1983 and just finally realized the detrimental effects. The COVID vaccines are not just a brand-new vaccine, but a brand, a brand-new drug therapy category. Never, ever have they been used on humans. Also, they were allowed EUA approval without animal trials. I have a graduate degree in health education, and pride myself on a 4.0 average. I've read many stats and understand how data can be manipulated and don't trust their vaccines. And it should be my choice what goes into my body and my children's body. So, should every other human have that right? I'd be happy to debate. And the safety of the vaccines at another time. I beg of you, please. And then there's a video button, but just, um. That's it.
Thank you for reviewing that for us too, and thank you to that person that took the time to write that to us. All right, next, you have no one else?
No, I have no one else.
Thank you. All right, so the chat needs to be turned off, right? Of ours. Thank you. All right, so review and approve board minutes for July 19th. Are there any corrections? I have two. Under the retirement gift discussion, the third sentence where it says this would only be for Rockingham teachers, that was a question. Would this only be for Rockingham teachers? As special educators and peer educators are employed by WNSU, because George asked that question. And I went back and reviewed the tapes to get that, and then there was discussion after that. And then the motion. George asked me to give the motion right before we voted. And what I said was, I motioned, so Priscilla Lambert motioned that we give a retirement gift of $100 per year for any retiring teacher who has served in our district for 20 or more years. Start, and that was, and then in our following discussion, starting with the 2020-2021 school year. Are there any other corrections? Is now, is there a motion?
I'm motioning to approve the July 19th meeting.
Second.
Second. Is Jason Benson here with us, or?
I don't believe so. Yes, he is.
Okay, so. Jason, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize to you for not checking before we started as well, because I should have done that to make sure that you were here. Okay, then we were going to review the town, the town minutes. And all the town minutes did for the March 1 and the March 2 meetings were to repeat the motions that were in the town meeting book and simply say that they were, who gave them, who gave the motion, who seconded, and that they passed for both years. So, we can either get those out to you to look at again, or we can.
Did Jason and I need to vote on the minutes, or because?
Didn't I get you to vote?
No.
I apologize. Oh, good, I do it good. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, Megan, how do you vote on the minutes? And Jason?
Can you reread them? I agree.
Thank you. So, the motion passed. I apologize. I got so involved with getting Jason Benson to make sure that I was doing that, and I missed you guys. I apologize. Okay, so we can either do what you, what you guys prefer on this as far as the March annual meetings. We will also, I've also asked Nicole to write up from the school's position as far as the minutes. This is just the annual ones, which I've approved and signed for them because they're the ones that were in the town report. So, do you want to just accept them as that, or do you want us to put off and and look at those again next time?
I think, do you want another round?
Do you want us to have a round of that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll be sure that we get those out in a little more detail for you. I apologize. I realized on the way to the meeting I hadn't had those put in, so we'll put those on the next one. Also, we'll need to put in the minutes from 3 to 21 that are right up at the, through the secretaries, 4/19, 21, and 6/7, 21, because those are the ones that are remaining. All right, um, we're on to reports. Principals, who would like to start? Carrie, am I seeing your hand to start?
Sure. I was just trying to get a mute button. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. And we've been hard at work at Central School gearing up in the last little bit there of our summer school program, which was a fabulous opportunity for students to come into school. We had six weeks of summer programming. Ellie Wentzle did a great job heading it up. We had so many great teachers and counselors that were hired. We really appreciated the opportunity for our families and this opportunity for some free programming for our students too. So, they had a great opportunity to do STEAM. They did a nature camp. They did arts and crafts. They did a whole variety of topics and things. So, we hope families enjoyed it, and I know the students are really excited to be able to go. And it was great to see them when I got to see them. So, thank you to everybody involved in our summer camp. We're also gearing up. We have some project-based learning in the works at Central, and the second grade team and I met with the Food Connects team and to work on planning our Shelburne Farms coordination of efforts with the Farm to School Program. And so, our second grade team will be have a chance to do some farm work. They'll be visiting some local farms. They'll be learning a lot about gardening and how they can bring those practices to their houses. Also, doing some work around recycling as well. So, we're really happy to be excited, excited to be partnering with the different groups and bringing this learning to life, and each grade is going to be doing something different. So, we'll give you an update on that as we get ready. The building is in the process of being rearranged and huge shout out to all the teachers. Almost every teacher's been in the building so far this month. Really getting things ready. We've moved a few classrooms. We did hire some new seats that you've talked about before, so. But we're getting everybody ready to start on September 7th, so not a ton of other new updates. That's pretty much about it. Any questions?
Okay. So, how many students did you have at the summer camp? Because that was some joyous noise coming from the playground every day at Park Place. I really enjoyed it. I was just curious, what, how many were there?
It fluctuated. There were somewhere, days there were 35, other days there were closer to 45 or so. And there were students in kindergarten through grade four.
Yeah, it was fantastic. So, such happy kids.
Good. They seemed to be really enjoying it. And they went a lot of field trips too, so they especially liked that.
Can you kind of tell us too what the expectation is on numbers for this fall?
So, we're looking right now at approximately 160 students from kindergarten through grade four. We will also be holding, hosting the pre-K classes. I mean, I don't have all the updates on that yet, but from K to four, we have about 100 students in person.
And the size of the classes range from one to one?
Class in first grade has about 12 and 12, but the fourth grade has the largest at about 20 and 20. And then kindergarten is about 17 and 17. Third grade, excuse me, second grade is about 17 and 17, and the third grade is about 16 and 17. Pretty well balanced.
So, that we're, good, the staff that we have, we're feeling comfortable with.
Yes.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Carrie. You're going to be around for the rest of the meeting, right? So, if we have questions later, we can. Thank you.
Really, thank you.
You want to go next?
Sure. Hello, everyone. Hope you're all having a great summer. I echo what Carrie said. Camp Achieve was an awesome opportunity for our students. Josh Averman, our administrative assistant, was our site director, and he did a fabulous job working with Ellie to coordinate that. We had a total of 38 students with weekly attendance ranging mostly in the 30s, except for the last week, there was a drop down to about 17 kids. But, so it was a really good attendance, and the students had a ton of fun. And like Carrie said, went on some pretty awesome field trips. So, there was a lot of coordination that I know Lynn Carey did and Ellie as well, but it was fabulous. Really, really fabulous. Last week, we had SCAMP camp for incoming kindergarten students, and we had 13 students attend that. And April Putnam, our new kindergarten teacher, and Gillian White, our first grade teacher facilitated the camp, which was filled with lots of fun and get-to-know-you activities. Like Carrie said, the building has, the building's been in flux all summer, but Bert and Gary have been extra busy giving, moving back the COVID, pre-COVID furnishings, because we can now have tables instead of desks, as well as making some adjustments for Camp Achieve in the building. But they are on track, and the areas that they've done look awesome so far. As I mentioned in my written report that Chris has, we also, as, as did all the other elementary schools, set up a bookroom for all of our Fountas and Penel books so that there's shared and easy access for all of our teachers. And we had two classroom teachers do that in July. So, that I'm really looking forward to, as are the teachers, because the books are all organized and they can get what they need based on student need. Also, as I had wrote, our playground, the updates to our playground that we needed to do for the, for VISBIT, the safety inspection. Unfortunately, there was a fire at the manufacturing plant, so our equipment's been delayed, but once that's there, we'll be able to install the new wood chips and get it up to those guidelines. Just to let you know, the elementary principals met, I would say probably like four times, Carrie, throughout the summer, and we just met today, in fact, to plan for the upcoming school year. We've done a lot of collaboration and look forward to continuing with that as well. Let's see, what else? I think that's it. At the beginning of the year, our PD will include responsive classroom and in-service from Leslie University to continue with our Fountas and Penel classroom, specific to phonics, spelling, and word study. So, that's it, but let's see, numbers. I know you asked about that, Priscilla. We're looking at around 82. We have a question about a few of them. And our class size numbers are very similar to Central. I can't remember what you said, Carrie, for first grade, but that's our smallest class. We only have 12 students in that class, so we have 16 in kindergarten, 12 first grade, 17 second grade, 17 third grade, and 24th grade. Any questions?
Laura, what did you say for third?
I said 17.
Okay, so, and 17 for both second and third?
Uh, yes, and we're waiting to hear from a couple of families that were not with us last year, and we don't have definite responses from them as to whether they're going to return or continue with whatever path they took last year.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just knew I missed one of them. I wasn't, I was second or third, I missed. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have questions? Anybody else? Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Susan, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, my colleagues, who I look forward to seeing tomorrow. We, like they, had an amazing summer school program here at the middle school. Oriana has put together a hugely successful summer school program. Her staff, inner staff provided our 60 campers with fun and engaging experiences, including swimming, hiking, a multitude of sports, gardening. We even have our own Rosie's Girls who have sharpened their carpentry skills by building birdhouses. It's been a delight for me to. It's been a delight for me to see the many smiles every day on the faces of our campers and for me to get to meet those students informally and had some really wonderful conversations with them. And I'm very fortunate to have been the recipient of two pieces of art that were given to me by two of the campers, and they're in my office now. I'd also like to give a shout out to Rick and his staff on doing an amazing job getting the school ready to welcome both staff and students back. Now that our campers have exited the building, they're in the process of finishing up. And the second floor is currently off limits to everyone, so they can get the floors to shine. We've had a very busy interviewing season to fill our open positions, but we're extremely excited to welcome the following new staff to the middle school. Jill Moore will be our secretary, Kat Goodell will be our nurse, Kathy Henley will be our counselor, Ellen Bowles, music. Chris Kelly, seventh grade social studies. Samantha Redding, fifth grade math and social studies. Jessica Illingworth, who had worked here previously in the school in another position, is now going to be in type one. And Amanda The Burge is now taking over seventh grade English Language Arts. We have, we most recently filled our eighth grade social studies position with Ben Jerome. We're looking forward to having him joining us. And we still have an eighth grade science position left open, but we received paperwork from a candidate today that we're going to be reviewing and hopefully we'll be setting up an interview with them later this week. We're really excited and looking forward to opening the doors of school for an exciting year at Bales Falls Middle School. And I would like to personally say thank you to everyone who has support and kindness in my transition to this position. I'd be more happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
You're just welcome. First regular board meeting, I guess. Okay, any questions for Susan?
Numbers?
I apologize. I was not prepared for that question. I can give you kind of some ballpark, and I will get you solid numbers tomorrow and we'll send them out to you. Our fifth grade will be our smallest, and our seventh and eighth grade will be our largest group of students in the building. It looks like we're going to be around the two hundred-plus range. Enrollment packets are beginning to come in, but as I said, I'll get you solid numbers and we'll make sure that you have those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I do, the new hires, did we already approve?
We haven't approved. We have two on the thing for later on in the meeting tonight. And we also have a discussion on the assignment reservations clarification under new business. We can do it now if that's a preference for board numbers.
No, Chris gave it up, I'll have to say it will be approved. So thank you. Welcome aboard. Appreciate it.
And they'll be here for that if we have questions later in the meeting anyway. Okay, okay, but any other questions as far as principals? We're all set? Okay, WNESU, would one of you like to take that or?
I can speak about it. Basically, trying to remember, there was some discussion about transparency as far as the SFR funds, and we're going to try to do something different as far as knowing as far as budgets and things like that. And then we passed the mask mandate at the SU level, but then each school has to also pass and vote on that. And this is a long meeting, so. It was a long meeting. But yeah, so but basically that, we asked for transparency and, you know, we're going to try to, try to work together with everyone. And then we talked a lot about the masking and what that is going to look like at the SU level. Anybody remember anything else?
No, we reviewed the superintendent's report and went through things. That's on the website, right, Chris?
Yes, it is, yep.
There were some things on transportation and historic practices, talked about new hires and the new positions using, moving Jim DeBauw to WNESU Director of Operations instead. I think that's instead of working at the high school, I've been told now, is that?
That is correct.
Do you have another maintenance director at the high school also, or just?
Yeah, each building has their own maintenance.
So that's an additional position.
Yeah, this is to oversee. Jim DeBauw's position is at the SU level with all the possible projects coming up with ASTRA three and stuff. When he boots on the ground to get permits and a lot of the stuff in the past that principals have been doing outside of their expertise, and it really takes away from what they should be doing as educators. So he's going to take on the legwork for any new projects. And you know, like for Cherry Hill, we had to get that all situated. He had that up, so.
Thank you. And then there was a little breakdown of the different schools, Athens Craft and Westminster. Central School Saxons are talking about new hires that are in there. So if people have other questions about those in the high, in middle school, I'm sorry. If people have more questions about those, they could probably look on the website and go through that. The, you kind of summarized, Mr. Pratt, some of the things that were in Dan French's COVID ideas for the start of school, but not all of them are in there. So we'll probably look at those under COVID a little bit to the good thing later in the, during the meeting. Any other questions on WNESU from anyone? Benson, did you have anything?
No, I was present at the meeting.
Okay.
I had a question. I know we're going to talk about the previous, I just don't see it on here. I might be missing it. The previous hires for the Rockingham.
It's, it's under assignments, reservations, clarification, eight D.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Did you have another question?
No, I was giving you a comment.
Okay, thank you. I have to look both directions. Okay, committees, policy, the McKinney-Vento policy on homeless students. I do have a printout of that, if anybody wants to look at that in addition to it. And Mr. Pratt says he could put that up on the screen if you have questions. We kind of reviewed it a little bit last time. It's pretty well standard by what the state is requiring, so that it covers any homeless students that are in our district. And this would be the upper second reading and warning it for being sent, being approved the next time into the policy.
What was that last part, Priscilla, warning to?
You would warn it to, for adoption at the next meeting. If we approved the second reading this time.
Okay, so can I go ahead and make the motion?
You may make a motion.
All right, so I would move to approve the second reading of the McKinney-Vento Act and warn it for adoption at the next school board meeting, Rockingham School Board Meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, let's start with Jason Benson.
Yes.
I'll get it right.
I say yes.
Jason, they do it. I look, yes. Okay, so that's all set for warning for next time. Okay, recovery team, I guess that's me. We had a meeting and covered some more of the development. We're looking at academics, social mental health, and truancy as the three areas that we really need to work on and recover from following the COVID process. I enjoy the committee. It's a good way to get to state community members and teachers and work with them on the, on the recovery plan that we're working on. We've been working mostly on ideas at this point. And one thing that we finished at the last meeting was the recommendation on the theory of action. And the way that reads that was sent to Mr. Pratt by the small committee that finished up on that today was every student in the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union will become a self-directed learner and creative problem solver, allowing each student to reach full potential with the capacity to choose from multiple pathways of success. This will happen if all staff, school staff collaborate with family and community members to equitably increase engagement, learning, and personal growth. That means everybody out there and everybody in here is working together to get each student to succeed and reach their absolute full potential. So it's a really good goal, I think, for us, and we're going to work on some more individual goals under that in the, in meetings ahead. So any questions on that? Or anybody else want to comment? Negotiations. Jason, do you have anything on that?
Just that they're moving finally, and we have a meeting this week. And nothing new to report, just that, you know, we're all looking to, you know, get these things moving in the right direction. Nothing, nothing major to.
Any questions? Okay, I don't think we have any other. Okay, so committee assignments. With George leaving our board, we needed to look at assignments and see where we add on that. And I was thinking that maybe Megan would take over for clerk, because I was clerk. And as I moved to the chair position, I need someone to do that. And is that something you would be willing to do? Okay, and that's just appointed, right, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, if he's just appointed, you're going to shave for Easton and shake him.
Okay. And we'll give you the support.
He has Andrew's.
Right, for assignments, I'd like to respectfully come off the negotiations for the pairs. I think that there's, there is a conflict. And only for the pairs, I'd like to come off for the teachers. I'd like to stay on that. There is no conflict. And, and, you know, we're all looking to, there was a lot of people moving all over the place. So I think with the team that they have and we have, it needs to stay that way so we can keep going in the right direction. But me not being on a pair, it's actually a win-win for me. So, you know, I think it's the right move for, for everybody. So I'm not worried about it.
I totally understand your feeling on that, and it just, it removes that feeling of, of maybe sometimes there might be or there might not be, and totally respect that. I do know that the teacher contract, when I was working as a teacher, is totally separate from the peer contract. And the two negotiate with different teams, so that, you know, can be done that way. I would again ask Megan if she would be the primary one on the pair negotiations. And I will serve as an alternate for both teachers and pairs. For any time that, Jason, if you felt like it was conflicting at all with anything, I would be there to support you and take over if, you know, if there was that feeling, but also that backup for you.
Yeah, I'd also, you know, I'd like to just ask if Jason Benson has any interest at all. I don't want to jump the line, just, I mean, he's been here longer than me, just in case he has thoughts on it.
That's true. I apologize, Jason, didn't ask you first. I was thinking that you were pretty, pretty stressed at this point and doing all you could to support us. But if you would like to step up for that, let, let me know.
Quite a bit on my plate right now, so if Megan wants to get into that position, that's okay with me. If not, then get into it.
Okay, and in the future, at any time, just let us know too, you know, if things change for you and it's easier for you. Talk about other assignments too as well. We do have, George was on policy. And since I'm the policy chair for the WNESU, I would love to have somebody added to that in his place along with me. I don't know, maybe, Jason, is that something you would be interested in? Jason Benson, is that something you would be interested in? That can be done by Zoom?
Yeah, it can be done by Zoom, but after the meeting, once a month.
Pardon? Yes, well, and sometimes we were meeting in the spring a little more often. We haven't met in, in July, because I was waiting to find some time where we could be kind of in person. And it's been hectic this summer, but we do need to look at some new policies that the state is telling us we absolutely need to have.
Yeah, it's about once a month.
In hours.
At the most, really, once a month.
Yeah, at least once a month, possibly. Jack is pushing us to do once a week, but that is really too much and overwhelming, I think, for some of us. So, I mean, once, twice a month. So, so you would be willing to do that? And I can add you to that team. Good, thank you. Good, under policy. And Megan, you're on recovery, so that one's okay. So I think that's all the committees, unless you can think of something else that we needed to be sure that we were filling. Yes.
I just, I just need to, if we lose people online, my computer's dying and I don't have my cord, but it doesn't mean the meeting ended, but I did need to say that. I should have a vote.
Will this work?
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Ten dollars.
Nice, you're really happy.
Thank you.
Saved. That's one of the nerves. Thank you.
How appropriate.
Yeah, she's always, always good to have a nurse in the room. Okay. All right, so now we're up to unfinished business for discussion and action. And the first thing on there is the request for students to be transferred to Rockingham. This is a fourth grade student and an eighth grade student. And we had asked, this is our nurses' children, Kate, Kat. I keep doing that, Kat. I am so, so sorry. Kat Goodell. And Kat has taken it on herself to, to look into that for us, to see if her putney would pay tuition to us. And putney is not willing to do that at this point. So it's up to us to decide whether we will, you know, allow her children to come without paying tuition. The tuition for students transferring from other places is, is expensive, sixteen thousand. But I just asked for numbers and I, it looks like there, you know, there are places in our school that, that would not mean that we have to hire anybody new to take care of our children. So it's really no additional cost out, sit out, out there, except for, you know, maybe a small amount of supplies and stuff that, you know, we certainly can't replace our nurse that easily. And she's, you know, we provide supplies to all of our students. So is there any other discussion that people want before we make our big motion and then we can discuss? Is there any other discussion that people want before we make our motion and then we can discuss, or?
Yeah, I can make a motion. Um, so I would move to accept the quest for fourth and eighth grade student transfer to Rockingham School District.
A second for discussion.
Yep.
Do you have anything else you want to add, Kat, or do you, did I cover it okay?
I could, I could be pushing the case, but um, I, they're both really excited about possibly coming here, they have friends in the district. Um, my son already is made of friends that wants him to get into sports, so. I, I don't know, I, it's just, it would be really a huge help for me, and it would help with my job so that I could stay late if I needed to. It would just, I, the school would have more access to me if they went here, so. That's probably not on call.
Wouldn't have to be running home.
Exactly, doing this, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would greatly appreciate that.
And next year, eh, I mean, we only have the eighth grader one year and the child could hit, your eighth grader could apply for school choice next year. The problem is that in um, the elementary levels up through grade eight, there isn't school choice, it's, it's, you know, it's where you're living and, eh, you know, whether you have a good reason and to apply for something like this, so.
Yeah, yeah, if, yeah, if they ended up staying where they are now, they would end up being home alone for hours a day, and I wouldn't be able to attend a lot of their after-school activities, so, you know, it would just be a lot easier and they'd be closer to me, so.
Anybody else want to comment, Jason, any comment?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay, so we'll, let's take a vote, um, there's a question, well, you have a question, sorry.
And for me, it's a, it's a no-brainer, um, especially with, um, you know, if anybody's worried about the money part of it, um, you know, your salary compared to previous nurse salary, it's all public knowledge, it's less, so that's a wash as far as I'm concerned, my other question would be next year, let's say, you know, you hit the lotto and you're not here, then what happens with, with that?
I don't know, if I hit the lotto, I'd still be nursing. I love my job, and hopefully I have a nursing role too. No, we, we want them to continue on through Wyndham South, uh, Wyndham Northeast, that's where me and my husband, or my husband and I both graduated from, we have strong connections here, we've wanted them here for years.
I would just also like to advocate the fact that, um, um, you know, it's a real solid family and really good people, and uh, they do a lot of good things for the community, and uh, you know, they're just solid, upstanding individuals, so. It's a no-brainer, no-brainer vote for me, so.
Okay. All right, so are we ready for the vote?
Sure.
Okay, Jason Benson, how do you vote? Do you want Megan to give the motion again? Yeah.
Okay, I'll read the motion.
Yes. I have my microphone.
Did he, oh, or did he say yes for me, your motion?
Yes is the vote, I mean.
Okay.
Yes is voted, he doesn't need it again, okay, yes, okay, uh, Jason?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and so the motion passed.
Thank you all so very much.
Okay, the next one is retirement gift. And let me just go ahead and make the motion for that before we get into it, let me, I get it from last time. Ready?
Got some here. My mind is.
No, mine are, mine are missing. And it's. Okay, in keeping with the um, motion that we made um, for the teachers last time, I would like to make a motion that we give a retirement gift of one hundred dollars per year to any support staff person who has served in our district for twenty or more years, starting with the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. I'm gonna scoot.
Second.
Okay, Megan seconded.
So, so can you clarify this, so this is para, basically, Paris or, or support staff in the Rockingham School Board of Schools for twenty years, not teaching, but it, or not employed anywhere else, but in the actual
Right.
our schools, okay.
Anyone who's retiring, any retiring
Okay.
Uh, support staff, that way, um, they, they get so much less than what we do, and so, um, it's crucial that, to me, that we recognize them in the same status that we just did last meeting for the, for the.
When you say less than we do, you mean teacher? Not school member, sorry.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're bringing your old life as a teacher, right?
We made that for so long.
I wouldn't get a hundred dollars a year, I wouldn't get a hundred dollars a year for, you know, I just, I still look at myself, you know, that, the other way, you know, but I'm not, I don't get that.
You cannot be a good teacher.
I'll never get that. Sorry about that, yes, and, and
Teacher.
To, yeah, this, in the same status as our teachers. Um, and that we should recognize them in the same light as we did, did the others. I'm gonna have to ask you to not participate in the conversation because our policy, and I can read it to you, that you can't because of the conflict of interest.
Which one?
You abstain, pardon?
Sure.
Okay, is that okay? Do you want to see, I can, I can read it to you, I I have read all the policies in the last couple of weeks.
I don't either.
Okay.
That's very good.
Okay. So is there any discussion, Jason, Jason, do you have any discussion on that?
And Flora is raising her hand.
Yeah, am I allowed to discuss?
Jason, do you have anything you want to say?
No, I'm good, other than absolutely positively, yes.
Okay. Do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay, then, then let, let me call the vote, we can't discuss.
Can't discuss it.
And I'm going to, uh, Jason, how would you vote?
Yes.
So yes for nice, okay, so the motion has passed. Um, I would have added just to, uh, transportation. Superintendent stepped out for a minute.
I can update you on that, I'm on a committee.
Okay.
We have not had a meeting ever, so, that's my update, in addition to uh, the supervisory, and I asked to have a meeting prior to school opening and prior to the next supervisor's meeting, so that, um, we can uh, discuss uh, some numbers and uh, charts and stats and stuff like that, so. That is an update on transportation.
Okay. Um, do you have any progress on how that's going to work in the winter time, I know it came up at the last meeting, as far as um, the concerns for the students that are at the top of that hill by Central School?
Yeah, I think, um, we, we have it, we're gonna have, um, anyone, any student who can't come down that hill, there will be a stop in the area. Um, that was one of the things that I discussed with, um, the trans, with uh, General Transportation and Jim DeBolt, so they've been working on, so one thing we said to them, kids can't get down those steps, we need a, we need a stop that they can catch on, and they assured me that it's been taken care of, and um, by the end of next week, you know, the roots have been redone, and so we're gonna get those, you know, roots out, and um, but that was the one criteria we have, we wanted to make sure that those kids were taken care of, if they couldn't get down those stairs, so they showed me they have, and um, soon as I get the roots, I will send them out via email um, to all the board members, so you guys are aware of what they look like as well.
Okay, great.
Question.
I, I think that will be a relief to those parents of the, at the top of that hill, okay, yes.
Are, are we still gonna have that uh, transportation meeting before the next supervisor meeting, just what we discussed last week?
Yeah, I think we have to get that, um, as soon as, as soon as I get the roots and have a chance to look through them, then we'll send something out to try to get the transportation meeting together, so we can all just kind of take a look at it and be on the same page.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, then we can kind of finalize what's going on at, at the next meeting.
We just want to, we just want to get the roots out to the families as, as quick as possible, just like anything else, but, um.
Now, will those students, will it be limited to just winter time, or would they have that option of getting on at the stop right from the start?
I mean, I think, I think it's just to be an option, they can, from the, from the start, and I, I think parents just have to communicate with us in regards to what their intentions are, is it just the winter or the stop, usually if it's our stu, and they're at the stop, they're gonna get on the bus, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else, any other unfinished business that I didn't get on there that anyone wants to put on there, we usually can't add in the middle of it, but I think we can, we're a small board, we can be flexible. Okay, all right, so new business. Um, I had someone bring up, uh, the first three things are kind of related, crossing guard, you got parking and warning signs. Um, they're all issues with, with school, safety for students getting to school, or, um, get, being able to get parents to get into school and that kind of thing, so. Um, as far as crossing guard, where are we at as far as hiring a crossing guard for down by Central?
Okay, we have it, we have it posted on School Spring, and it will also be going into, um, the shop up. So, um, you know, sometimes you have better luck if it's, if it's local, and we know the shop goes out to, you know, all the surrounding communities and stuff. Um, it's, and so we're just waiting for applicants to, to come in. Uh, if we don't have anyone, though, you know, if, um, we need to, we'll, we'll, as a team, we'll come together and figure out a way to, to make sure that we have someone there on the corner, um, on Central. From Central School.
And did you reach out, eh, I know, um, Green Mountain Transportation, is that what it is? Did it in the past, is that an option still, or is that?
At this point, I'm respecting that, they, you know, they, they decided, you know, not to do that particular intersection anymore. I know there have been issues there in the past, sa, you know, safety issues, so, um, you know, they've reached out to me and just waited, they will not be doing it next year, so, unless they reach back out and tell me they're, they changed and they want to reconsider doing that. Um, but at this point, I haven't, no, or don't, wanted to take that back on.
Okay. Okay, um, any other questions on that? Okay, um, the handicap parking on School Street, it was pointed out to me that there's no some, no place for anyone as far as handicapped for here at the middle school. Um, how do we go about taking care of that, do we?
I think in the past, we've reached out to the town because it's their town roads and asked them to, um, to have the, the handicap spots marked, um, and I think that was right before COVID hit, that we were looking into that, I know the Rockingham Board was looking into that. Um, so that's something that, uh, that Karen Bukowski was working with the town, seeing, you know, if we could get that signage up for handicap parking, it's the only handicap parking space we have right now is behind the school and direct access to that door there, but that's school property, so we have it marked, but as far as the town, they have to determine where, um, the handicap parking can be, because um, we need to make sure that the, the curb is set up for wheelchair, chair accessibility, and we have that, it's right in front of the school. So I know Karen Bukowski was working with the town last year, so, Susan, you might want to reach out to the town and ask them, um,
Okay.
about, you know, does it need any space?
Yeah, so, on my walk here, because I walk really slow to avoid my kids at night, um, I walked through the TD Bank parking lot, and in front of TD Bank, I believe there's more spots, but then at the top, uh, near the Hedy Green Park, there's one handicap spot on the corner of that lot, and I wonder if that is something the town will try to say is a handicap spot, I, I mean, I have no idea, I have no idea, but I wonder if that might be a loophole, they might say, well, there is one, because the bank has its own dedicated accessible spot, but there's just one lone handicap spot at the top of that parking lot, that really doesn't, it's not accessible to much except a big steep hill. Can I get it, am I allowed? I don't know the rules. Um, I wonder also, like, if the town pushes back, maybe uh, compromise would be to have a movable sign, a handicap sign, that would only be placed out during school hours.
Awesome.
Priscilla.
You want to comment?
I'll chop out the bit, fire away.
I was going to say that, you know, then that would not be available for, like, evening activities, which we have evening activities, and I don't, I think the time that, that parking is the most in need is during school hours, so I do think it's very important to have a handicap place out in front of the school, um. In the back, I know when my child went here at the back, um, and we could go in that way and stuff, but now with the configuration of the school changing with the access in the front way, the way it is before, you didn't have that access come in down here, you came in the sides and then you came downstairs. And so now, coming in that front there, I think we need something at the front, and I don't, I can't see this, the town being at all adverse to adding that space, although I, I certainly can't speak for them, because it does need to go to the town for that request. So, that's where I'm coming from, but I'm, what do you, go ahead, Jason.
I had a couple of things, I think that this would be a great project for Jen to do instead of Mr. Johnson, because he's got a bunch of other stuff to do and take care of, and I think that's part.
That's a good idea, yes.
That's what he's hard for, and I bet you that, um, the last time I designed a parking lot, you needed to have ten percent of the parking lot needed to be for a handicap. Um, and I'd be willing to bet that if you look at the original plans, there probably was a spot out front at one time, and the sign has been removed either by a plow truck hitting, hitting it or something like that, and if all else fails, just paint something and beg forgiveness from the town later.
Yeah, I, I think the town would be very, really.
Yeah, I'll do the same thing.
Okay, so, are you both gonna reach out to Jim?
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
So that's all taken care of, thank you. Okay, and then next was warning signs for the schools. Uh, that was the question about, um, putting warning signs up on Atkinson Street, um, coming north and south.
What kind of warning signs?
Saying, school, yeah, you know, you're approaching a school or whatever they're supposed to say. Um, particularly with the, um, problems with, um, all of the traffic being routed through Pelles Falls as a result of Route twelve having problems going north of here, so we'll be more out to having having them go, I know when I came to the meeting tonight, I didn't even try to go down as far as Green Street and down and, and across, it was totally blocked all the way up to Atkinson Street, sitting there to go across that bridge.
So you're talking about school zone signs, slow.
Yeah, school zones, yes.
Oh, I can reach out, I can have, um, Jim reach out to the town about that too.
Okay, great.
And, and what specific areas were you thinking, Priscilla?
I was thinking north of, of the school and south of the school and, and Atkinson, because when you come down and you've got that, that, where you're gonna have the crossing guard, you've got students crossing, and if, if people are, you know, our parents that have children going there are well aware that there's a school there, but because the school sits down off the main route there, children cross and, and it could be dangerous, so.
Yep, well, uh, let me get to Jim for that.
I know that right now, um, the uh, who was it, Scott, at the, the town manager, um, said that, um, at the town manager's office, that he hadn't spoken with you at all, um, about conversations with, because of the removal of that building and the dangers of that.
Yeah.
And having to redesign, maybe, maybe in the future they'll redesign the enhancements at that, um, that traffic place there, but right now, with, until the building comes down, they really don't want to do any improvements, but I think the signs are not necessarily improvements, it's just.
Yeah, because they can do on the other side as long as, you know.
You know. Okay. Um, any other questions on that? Okay, uh, the next question is a so, uh, assignments and reservations, the clarification of the list from last time, because I basically had asked the question about those being reservations, and I think we've had an updated list that, um, that came from, um, the superintendent's office, Nicole, and so that kind of, that's clarified those, and any other questions on that? We can look at maybe. And, uh, there's like ten that I see that are leaving, maybe thirteen, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven of those, fifteen we're leaving, and then five of them are moving to other positions, rather than just being straight replacements. And if we have any. And if we have any further questions on that, we can address that when we go into a discussion as far as now in each position. Is that okay?
Are we going into exactly the same?
Yeah, yeah, number eleven. Unless somebody's got a specific question right at the moment, okay? Okay, discussion of COVID's safety protocols. Okay.
I'd like to, um, here's my motion for tonight. This applies to grade K through five, or until vaccinated eligible. I want to mask the first ten days. Then optional to mask for all. After ten days, if masking. School will supply all students and staff the N ninety-five mask along with shields if desired. While students and staff are sitting at a desk or works workspace, masks and or shields may be removed if desired. Administration will provide weekly updates on vaccine percentages utilizing school website. And an agenda item will be provided for discussion and or action item for the board every month to track results. Of vaccine percentages and updates on students who are not yet eligible. I'd like to speak on that, okay?
I'll second you, just for the discussion.
Could you read it again? It's a long one.
So, uh, I'd like to mask for the first ten days. Then optional to mask for everyone after that. If masking, school supply all students and staff with the N ninety-five mask along with shields if desired. While students and staff are sitting at the desk or workspace, masks and or shields may be removed if desired. Administration will provide weekly updates on vaccine percentages utilizing the school website. And an agenda item will be provided for discussion and or action item for the board every month. To track results of vaccine percentages and updates on students who are not yet eligible.
Can I ask a question on that? Um, do you mean K and ninety-five masks? Because the N ninety-five, you have to be critical.
You picked only K to find?
I would like for the, um, for all of the students who are not yet eligible. Vaccination for for the, for the vex, for the vaccine, no, I'm sorry, for the, uh, all, all students, uh, K through, uh, eighth grade.
Okay, because she said K through five, so.
I forgot that they were in a school building as well.
It's got a lot of parts to it.
Yep, I'd like to explain enough. Okay, so I'm breaking this down for you, so, and based on the input that we all have received, uh, from the public. Um, I think it's okay to mask for the first ten days. To get everybody comfortable, then, I'd like to make them optional for all. So, if you want a mask, you feel comfortable with a mask, please do, nobody's gonna, you know, i- i- it's optional. If you're comfortable not wearing a mask, that's fine too, I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell some, I don't wanna mandate that somebody has to wear a mask all day long. And since, uh, if they have to require to wear a mask, I want to have the best mask available, and I want to have the schools pay for it. If that's an issue as far as the the virus and the aerosol rates and all that stuff, then we should have the best mask possible during the school. Uh, and along with shields, if they feel comfortable with it. Um, if they desire to wear them. If if you're sitting at a desk, just like when you go to a restaurant, you know, you sit down at the restaurant. You take your mask off, you can't get COVID, but get up and walk around, go to your bathroom, get your mask back, because that's how you COVID. Being a little start, but that's, so I want to do the same thing, and I'm trying to make it logical for all.
If I could speak from a health standpoint, the shields unfortunately aren't recommended for kids. Because of the fit.
I just, I just wanna, I just want everyone to feel comfortable.
No, I get it, I I agree with you.
And then, um, so whether sitting at the desk or workspace, you know, while they're sitting there, they 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 have the option, if they want to, to take the mask off. Or or shield, or whatever they're gonna use. Um, if you get up and move around, you gotta put it up. And then I would like the administration to provide weekly updates on vaccine percentages, so grades. Uh, percentages as far as, like, we don't know what they are yet, um. You know, I'm I'm assuming that the nurse is gonna get them, not the names of the kids, but the, who is, what the percentage is. I would like to have weekly updates for us, so that we can, and we, on monthly meetings, we can decide which direction we want to continue to go. So provide percentages, and then when the kids are eligible, um, there's not vaccine eligible for younger kids right now. So when that becomes available, then again, percentages as well. Um, and then I'd also like to make sure that it's on the agenda every single month, so that we can discuss it and have an action item. Um, so that we don't basically get stuck in the same situation where last year, we, you know, we, it was. It was a terrible year for everybody, no doubt, but when we, when we are motionless to open schools as soon as possible. And ended up being men, and so, you know, the numbers were really low last year at points, and we didn't, we still didn't open up schools. So I want to be able to, every month, say, you know, this is the direction we're at, this is the, this is how we need to pivot, either way. Um, and then we want to be able to, uh. Action, and we're meeting, track results and vaccine percentages, and then updates, um, you know, then again, you know, weekly, monthly updates on students. What the numbers are, as soon as, you know, if the rule is eighty percent, mask can come off, then, you know, whether it's an option or not. You know, the mask, you know, the mandate goes away, so.
Jason, I'm gonna interrupt you, it's absolutely too complicated, honestly, as far as I'm concerned, to photo, but before we we look at, maybe. Um, you're pulling it back and then looking at sections of it or something, um, let's, let's look at the different possibilities for masks. Um, this is the one that the doctor recommended for my child to wear. And it, it covers the entire face, it comes down, basically something can't come in and up underneath. It's, it's up above the eyes, so that the eyes are covered. And. As our lights go out, and, and so it protects your eyes as well as your face. It allows the teacher to be able to see the student, so you don't have the student possibly in distress. And not being able to recognize that, it also allows that child to see through it and, um. And be able to breathe at the same time, um, they can recognize that someone else is talking and can pick up on the different sounds and that kind of thing. Uh, there were some doctors that feel this is preferable to a cloth mask. There are others that do, do not, it's, you know, there's a lot of. Literature out there, and you have to realize that that it's both ways. Um, but since my doctor recommends this, it makes my child's breathing easy. And it also allows for protection, he can work, he can go to work, and he's. Um, he's also vaccinated, so he's protected, and, and it's, it works. Um, Catherine brought down this one, which is a. Cloth one, but it has a. Uh, place here where you can see the mouth and see what is being said and what is going on. So, at least it's not covering up and hiding their, um. Emotions, and so the teacher can pick up on any stress levels or anything that's going on. Um, for a child to be wearing it all day long is pretty rough. Uh, there are, in the safety protocols that are put out by the state, there are, um. Allowances for, um, picking them off during organizational or. Uh, instructional time, if they're needed, and. Looking at that, when we've got the distancing there, maybe what we need to do, and breaking it down with, with, um, Jason's. If Jason wants pause, the face shields. You can get, and someone might be able to find a cheaper place, but I know you can buy them at ten. Per four dollars and fifty cents on Amazon. They're more expensive some other places, but the school could even purchase those at a thousand per, uh, forty-five dollars. Not a very big cost to, to us, and it would cover for those people that were really absolutely objecting. To the cloth mask for the daytime, so there's options as well. Kat, you have something to say?
Yeah, regarding the vaccine rates, I'm getting a summary, so right now, school nurses are not allowed to look at that history. Because it's not a required vaccine for school. So, in order to get those numbers, the Agency of Education is working with the school nurses to come up with a way to give us those numbers. So I don't know how often that's gonna be as of yet, like, how often they're gonna update those numbers.
So, the 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 rule was, if the mandate came out in ten days, then we're gonna look at the numbers.
Yeah, the Agency of Education is gonna look at the numbers with Vermont Department of Health, and then they're gonna relay those numbers to the healthcare professionals in the schools.
How often would you be getting them?
They wouldn't give us those guidelines.
See, see, there lies the problem, because if, if they're saying, if they put something out and says once you hit eighty percent, and you don't have the numbers.
I'm sure it'll be often, I just don't have the data.
But that's, the problem is that.
That's the one, it's gonna be last minute, and they're gonna say, this is how we're gonna do it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's why we can make this motion, and, uh, so basically, Priscilla. My motion encompasses everyone.
It's too big.
And, well, basically, it's this, mask are optional, you want a mask, you feel comfortable with a mask, have a mask. Uh, the school's gonna pay for the mask. It's gonna be tracked, so we can pivot, like what Kat's saying, if numbers aren't coming out, why would we want kids in a mask all day long? And if you're sitting at the, at a desk, you should not have a mask on, if you're, it's okay to eat at a restaurant and take your mask off. Why shouldn't you be okay in a school? I just, I'm I'm trying to put logic in all this and what I see around, you know, when we're, when my kids are playing basketball. You know, locally, um, and they're running around, you know, they're not masked up, so why all of a sudden, you know, so that's, that's my motion. And that was seconded, so we should vote on it, if you don't wanna, it's, it's fine.
Megan, watch, check and see, Mr. Benson?
Yeah, Jason, do you have some comments?
No, I don't, I'm happy with the motion, I'm happy with the. A whole other approach as well, but as the motion is, it's the only one on the table right now. That's all.
Um, I, I like where Jason's brain is going with this. Because I walked into this meeting tonight thinking it was a foregone conclusion, I thought I knew how it was gonna. Go, um, and I like this, and I think we're going in the right direction, um, I also think. What I've been hearing is that these surges to the last seven to nine weeks in our started mid-July, um, and I think. Beyond negotiations and budgets, I have two jobs sitting here. My first job is to keep our school learning community safe, and my second job is to keep it open, and I think. Cutting off masks after just ten days in the middle of a surge. Of a variant that's infecting fifteen percent of our children, it was in the first week of August, is a little short sighted, I think it's. It's an approach to work together and find middle ground, but I don't personally, and this is me, I'm not speaking as anything other than. An armchair quarterback at this point, because I didn't get the book of all the answers, I don't know if you guys did, but didn't make it to my house. So I'm trying, and I'm trying to pull data, and and it's conflicting, just like we all are, but I think. In a prudent approach to keeping our schools open, um. After ten days, I I I think. It's it's abrupt, I think, it's something maybe we should revisit in October, look at numbers, the the thing with this. The the first thing I noticed in in this motion was. The requirement to track vaccine rates in our schools, but not infection rates in the community, I think that might be a bit of a short. Sighted, um, I'm more interested in what's going on, I also had a little close tone too, about what's happening inside and outside of our schools. Um, I think vaccine rates are great, it's, but it's more like a pat on the back, because the numbers are gonna keep rising with each meeting, that's fantastic, but. What's happening with infection rates, and I know, I know, the the data says that the death rate. For children who contract COVID is less than one percent, personally, that's way too many, but. Death rates don't close schools, infection rates close schools, um, and if our job is to keep our schools open and safe, I think. We need to add a little more to to this, um, but I I really, I really like where Jason's going with this, he's trying to stay true to his beliefs, but also. Get some middle ground, so we don't have a complete combustion in our meeting, which we haven't yet, I think we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Pr- Priscilla, I'm just nervous that if we don't spell it out, for administration, what we want, like Megan's saying, revisit it in October. We don't spell it out to the T, we're gonna end up in the same place that we were last year. And it just, if the vaccine comes out for little kids in January or whatever, then you're gonna have, we're gonna be at square one, people may or may not want to do it. Whether I believe in a vaccine or not is different, I don't want a mandate to somebody saying you have to take the vaccine. I think that is wrong, that's not our way of what we believe in as a society, I thought. But I don't know, it's a little messed up outside at the moment, so I just wanna, and and. You've been here a long time, Priscilla, you know, if we don't. Dot our i's and cross our t's, it's not going to happen for us, just like it did last year, and, you know, we. We could have rolled the dice last year, I mean, you know, and Megan's right, we do need to talk about the, uh, the outside, outside of it, but, you know. Here here's a real hard number for you, last year in the state of Vermont, there was eighty-four suicides for teenagers. Eighty-four, that's a lot, and there was zero deaths for for teenagers with COVID, so that.
We haven't had any deaths in in our state.
I'm just saying, the emotions, I I always go back to the kids, and I'm gonna fight for the kids forever, and the emotional stuff that we're putting these kids through. We don't know today what we're doing from five years from now, what's gonna happen with these kids. You know, and I have a large family, I have six kids, and, you know, I I have, I know of one that's like, I'll wear the mask, I'll do whatever. And I have others that are like. No, this is, this is silly, so, that's, I've, I really have a mixed bag at home, so it's, you know, so it is, that's. I'm I'm trying to do it right for everyone, and just, just saying, this is how we gotta do it, so I'm trying to. I I think it should be optional, you know, at some point, parents need to have that option, whether they feel safe or not. And, you know, whether I believe in it or not, that's, that's what I'd like to do.
Just looking at our agenda, there's a, on the next item, there's a questionnaire to find, uh, vaccination levels. And the parents and and staff concerns. We should be looking at, and I'm gonna kind of combine these two together in this discussion, um. If we put out a very simple questionnaire with student name, vaccinated, yes or no. And the date, if they have been. I want students that mask, yes or no. Prefer cloth mask, clear face shield, either, and then other concerns. We could address where the kids are, we do the same thing for staff, we do vaccinated, yes, no. Date, they want the staff mask, yes, no, prefer the three preferences, they want the student's mask, yes, no. And the preferences and other concerns, that would at least get us some depth and get us some information. That we could, you know, know how our constituents feel and what's out there, rather than thinking that we have. The capability of making a decision that's quite as as broad as what you just. Just presented to us, Jason. Um, because I do think that we need to know. Um, because I do think that we need to know. What the levels are. I do think we need to know how the parents feel and. All of those things.
And I agree with you. That's why I I say for the first ten days, we go masked, and then we can still find out that data and then pivot. I just don't wanna be tied into something all year long, when the data may or may not prove that. If it does, then it works.
Then why not make your motion simply that um, we wear masks for the first ten days? With this right, the other part that I heard from you was with the right to remove them when they're seated at their desks. And not moving around the classroom when they're, because they would be distanced at that point. And leave it at that, because we will have a meeting at the end of the ten days. We also, if we did that and found out the data and find out we're pretty high. We could also have, we could schedule a meeting on the, say, the second of September. To look at, you know, where we're at data wise, just a quick one, just to cover those issues. And then our regular meeting, which would be on the twentieth of September, which is the third week. We could, and is right at the end of those ten days. We could hold the meeting that night and see what we do for the next bit, but to tell them now. That we're doing the ten days and then optional after that with nothing out there, um, uh, makes me uncomfortable.
So the thing that makes me comfortable is I have faith in what I'm hearing from the community. What I'm seeing on Facebook, you know, where there's nothing on Facebook, right? Um, there's nothing in social media, um. You know, there there's a outpouring of mask are bad, that's what I'm hearing, you know, and I want to advocate. For those people that, a- and I think it's okay to put some onus on the parent. And we don't need to mandate how they parent their kids. And if they don't want a mask, that should be optional for them. And I'm okay with that.
Well, if we had eighty percent already at the middle school. We could, we could cut that down if we had a meeting, you know, if we found that data out and we have the meeting right before school starts at the on the. Say, the second of September, then we could cut that down. Then you don't even have to have your two weeks for them, but you could also keep it in. In line for those that aren't able to do that and be able to do that, but this is pretty open. Um, Chris, I can give you the floor.
Make a suggestion, you know, um, I I see what everyone's saying here. It's not an easy decision for anybody. Is, and I know that at the ASU board meeting, you know, recommended to to the ASU board to follow, you know, the state guidelines. But that, you know, so what I'm hearing, wouldn't it make sense to. For now, adopt what the state says at the eighty percent. Then after the first time that the state tells us what the percentage is at. Then you can go back and say, like, you could make a motion until this date, we are adopting the state's guidelines. Then you can go back and change it to whatever you want, if you're not happy with the percentages. Or, you know, you could decide, okay, we want kids to take their masks off. That way, you're you're not tied into something like you were last year, like Jason was saying. You can go back and say, okay, based on the first report out, they might say, you're at eighty percent. And then, you know, masks are off anyways. That way you guys aren't chomping at the bit, trying to, you know, make everyone happy, because we're never gonna do that. But I think the strategic approach is. Adopt what the state has in place is the eighty percent. If you're not happy with the first report out, then come back together as a board. And tweak it to however you feel most comfortable for for the communities.
See, I think we can have that information before school starts, and then we wouldn't even have to make those kids wear their mask. Those ones vaccinated kids wear their masks.
Well, that's 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 why they're doing the ten days, because that's giving us the time to get that information.
But I think we've got, we've got three weeks till school starts.
Yeah, you can ask. The only problem is that you can't.
And if we don't, and we don't, if we don't have it at that point, then we could just, we could go the ten days, but I think. If we've got that information beforehand, we wouldn't have to.
Right, and you can ask too, but then how do you verify without being able to pull that from the organization registry?
Oh, they could come in and and show you the next, you know.
That that's why I wrote the motion like this, because, again, you know, we don't know what we don't know. And I I don't have faith that we're gonna have the the data or the correct data. And then let's say that, yeah, I mean, we have a middle school problem as it is. We have the fifth grade who's in the middle school. And then every other grade, if they if they hit eighty percent, they could take the mask off, then you you could potentially have older kids. You know, ha ha, you gotta have your mask on still. And then there is no, there is no end game for those. The little, the little guys until a vaccine comes out, and then parental choice. So, you know, is that, is, what is the end game? Is the end game gonna be mask forever? Just, I just don't.
If I can give anyone a statement, so it said January originally, but now there's talk that it's gonna be. The data is gonna be given to the FDA right at the September, and then the generally takes a couple of weeks for the EUA to come out.
Right.
And then there are states already planning school-wide vaccine clinics for that age group.
But then again, you have the, whether the parent is able to do that or not.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I just.
And that's where your nurses can come in and educate and.
Right. Well, that that's why I wrote it like this, so we can have a look at it all the time.
Yeah.
So we can, you know, that that's why I wrote it like that, so.
Okay, sorry. You're looking at me like you're mad or something.
I'm getting side eyes, recognizing you. Um, I I'm curious, um, so we're talking about. A situation with um, vaccine rates for twelve and older, right? What about R K through five? Are we saying they just, after ten days?
Optional.
Optional? I, you know, I'm I'm uncomfortable with this in a lot of ways, because right now we've got a a Petri dish happening in the southern states of what's happening with. Kids going back to school unmasked and and, you know, one, one quick look at what's happening in Florida, Georgia, Texas, Arizona. It's within days. We have infections, we have quarantines, and I believe in. It was North Carolina had to close its school for three weeks after being open for less than a full week. So I'm. I I don't, I don't wanna tell people how to parent. What I wanna do as a school board member is to be able to say that I kept kids. And staff safe enough to keep schools open safely. And so I think yanking masks off. Unvaccinated kids um, with no option to be vaccinated. Uh, might exacerbate a problem. Um, it might not after. After, you know, the first few weeks of school, it it may be just fine. We're we're living in our. Unicorn land where it didn't make it to us, but I just have a feeling that we are gonna see. If we're not careful, we're gonna, we're gonna see even if it's a smaller rate at what's happening in the south, um. I don't want the schools to close, and I think a big factor in that is keeping the children without access to vaccines. Ask until they have access to vaccines.
Turn the lights on.
That's my take on it. That's that's my only take.
And I I hear what you're saying about, like, how come they can do this in the community and then they go to school and they can't? The difference, if I could speak from science of that, is that this community. Is more adults, right? Some more people who are eligible for vaccines. Then you come into a school where it's majority children. This school, that's a blessing, because it's, a lot of them are eligible for the vaccine, but yeah, elementary is a totally different ballgame. So, but I hear you. It's frustrating. As a parent myself, it's hard to explain it to my kids.
And that's why I also put in there, yeah, the ninety-five mask, because, you know, if if all the data. That I'm looking at says that is the best mask as far as aerosol rates, then we should provide that for all of the students. I don't care about the cost. Um, and I think that, yeah, I mean, we're just fooling ourselves with, you know, the. The masks that, you know, I don't know what percentage the masks are, but wouldn't they say ninety-five is the best? And schools should provide them all the time, and a lot of them.
Can anybody speak to what the state guidance is for children when they're sitting down now in in instruction? Is it nice to remain masked?
So they're saying masks indoor at all times, um, unless required for operational or instructional purposes. So that would be like, if you're doing speech therapy with a child and you need to see their lips, then you take the mask off. Um, but the difference this year compared to last year, there's no different requirements.
Okay.
So the state is saying at all times, thinking that classrooms aren't gonna be distanced anymore.
Can I just throw one last?
Okay, let me, let me just answer that question of what Megan just asked. Um, it it, to stay home when sick.
Okay.
That's the first thing. Show symptoms of of COVID. They have the fever, hundred point four or higher. Um, currently in quarantine due to close contact with an individual or in isolation due to, due to testing positive. They would stay home. If they begin at school, the student or staff member should be sent home as soon as possible. The individual should be isolated from other staff and students until they go home. Masks. Allow school districts time to calculate the percentage of currently eligible students who have received two doses of a two-dose vaccine. Schools should require universal masking for all students and staff. When indoors for the first ten instructional days of the school year, currently all Vermonters age twelve and older are eligible to be vaccinated. Following the first ten instructional days of the school year, masks should no longer be required for all those eligible for vaccination. When the vaccination rate, two doses or two dose vaccine. Among students is equal to or greater than eighty percent of the school's currently eligible population. Masks should be required indoor for students younger than twelve or not eligible to be vaccinated at this time. Masks, when required, may be removed when needed for instructional or operational purposes. Masks, that would be reading too, because a lot of times with reading, you have to see.
Whatever the teacher needs.
Teachers could allow that. Masks are currently required for all passengers on buses per federal regulation, regardless of age or vaccination status. Masks should not be required outdoors. Guidance will be updated when vaccine eligibility expands. Surveillance testing will be offered to schools for both students and staff. Students should continue to participate in contact tracing as requested by the health department. Those are the rules that were put out on August fourth, that they are recommending. It's a recommendation, not a requirement. But it does allow some flexibility. That's why I wanted the the questionnaire. Sent out and for us to not have to wait the ten days, because if we have that eighty percent. We don't have to have those kids masked in that kind of release some of the situation, but.
Just, just the sixth grade, not, not the fifth.
Uh, sixth grade could also have to, then all of those students, some of those students will be eleven. Starting this full year, because you've got six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and sixth grade eleven.
You also have the fifth grade here.
Yeah, fifth grade and sixth grade here.
So I I just wanna mention one last thing that I'll stop talking. Based on all my years in restaurant and food safety certified. Bacteria grows vast from the temperature of forty-one degrees. To a hundred and forty degrees. Your mouth is constantly at ninety-eight point six degrees. If you're gonna constantly breathe back in. Any of that stuff in your mask, that is not good for you. Um, and and we're we're in a tricky situation, because COVID is virus and aerosol, all that kinda stuff. The reason why we have refrigerators, they keep food, refrigerators are kept from thirty-four, forty degrees. So bacteria, refrigerators don't stop bacteria from growing, but they stunt it. That's why refrigerated food is kept that low. That's why you cook your food to, for chicken, it's a hundred and sixty-five degrees. Plus or minus twenty-five degrees, so minus twenty-five from one sixty-five to one forty. You cook your beef to a minimum of a hundred and fifty-five degrees, medium well. One forty is uh, medium rare. So that's why we have those guidelines in place for food. So I just, you know, again, um, my motion is trying to encompass everyone. And that we can try to put right, and. That's all I have to say.
Okay, I would propose an amendment to your motion. And that would be to follow the state guidelines for ten days or shorter if the data that we are gonna. Collect my questionnaire supports that on August thirty-first. With the, with the motion to be reconsidered on September twentieth. And allowing the use of, I would like to add if it's okay with people, the use of. Masks, cloth masks, shields, or the, this type of mask. Is that comfortable with you, Kat, or do I need to leave that out? Uh, it's something that we can agree on, that we can pass.
We'd have to research CDC guidance on face shields for kids. Um, and last year's recommendation, they didn't recommend them, and they're not good at wearing them. They're not good at wearing masks either, we know that, so, um, but.
I'm having, I'm having a lot of trouble understanding you though, with your mask on.
Yeah, um, well, I also mumble. So, no, I I think, like, looking up the science behind it is the best thing to do before you go ahead and recommend those. And make sure that it is a CDC recommendation that kids could wear those.
Uh, there are some doctors that recommend, there are some that do not, and it's it's a mixed.
Right, doctors, but CDC is, so.
Yeah, well, there's some there that that do and some that do not, as I said, so it's a mixed bag, so I think it's a, now, if it's. Adequate in like, my doctor's recommending it, I think it's certainly adequate if doctors are recommending it, but. That's my opinion. That doesn't mean other people are or people are comfortable with that, so that's why it's out there. That's why I asked you before adding it to my. To my motion.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I'm, as a nurse, I don't like saying yes or no, it's something without knowing.
I would, I would recommend the the amendment, follow the state guidelines for ten days or shorter. If data supports it, based on the questionnaire that we put out, that's back on October thirty-first. With the motion to be reconsidered on September twentieth.
I'd like to vote on my original motion first.
This is an amendment to it, so depending upon whether somebody wants to.
Doesn't he have to accept the friendly amendment to his motion or not accept it?
No.
You can, you can second it, or no?
I I, you know, it's.
Priscilla, that's not how it works.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, she can second it if she wants to.
You have to ask me.
No, I'm not making a friendly amendment. I'm making an amendment. I can make any amendment I want to yours. It isn't a friendly amendment, it's an amendment.
Why don't we just vote on this one and then you.
Because I just made an amendment, Jason, Jason, out of order, because I just made an amendment. Now, if no one wants to second it, that's up to them, but if they second it, we need to vote on it.
Can you read?
Or we can vote on yours and we can redo another amendment, give another motion. What's your preference?
Um, I'd like to vote on Jason's motion.
So we'll vote on, we'll vote on Jason's first.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's done too much. Read your motion, Jason.
This applies to grade K through eight or until vaccinated eligible. Mask the first ten days, then optional to mask for all. If masking, school will supply all students with the ninety-five mask, KN ninety-five. Along with shields if desired. While students and staff are sitting at a desk or workspace, masks and or shields may be removed if desired. Administration will provide weekly updates on vaccine percentages. Utilize on school website and an agenda item will be provided for discussion. And or action item for the board every month to track results of vaccine percentages and updates. On students who are not yet eligible.
Okay, so we're ready to vote? Okay, Jason, how do you vote?
Yes.
Megan? Uh, Jason?
Yes.
And I've but no, so the motion fails. Okay. So let's turn mine. I would follow this date, make a motion to follow the state guidelines for ten days or shorter if the data that we collect on the questionnaire that it's turned in by August thirty-first supports lessening the, what that also follows if it's eighty percent, so depending, let me start over. I make the motion to follow the state guidelines for ten days or shorter if, if the data collected supports um, reducing the time, the data to be due in on August thirty-first with the motion to be reconsidered on September twentieth.
May I ask, should I second it first?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, now can I ask, when, when we're speaking about the ten days and removing the masks, where does K through five stand in this motion?
Where everybody is, is following those ten days of wearing masks.
Okay.
Then at the, if we get the data in ahead of time, then they would have to still wear it, yes. But we would be reconsidering it on September twentieth.
Okay, okay, but, so K through five, no matter how ten days pass, K through five remains masked. If there's data representing eighty percent for twelve and older in our district, they may remove the masks at that point if there's data supporting that eighty percent of vaccination rate, but K through.
That would only be up here at the middle school.
Right, 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 K through six, our K through six or twelve and unders remain masked until we revisit it September twentieth?
Yes, that's when it would be our next regular meeting.
Okay. And then what, are you following state guidelines on the remainder of, you know, how it was presented?
Yeah, everything that was in, in the, the letter from Mark.
Okay.
Levine and Daniel French. Mark Levine being Commissioner of Health and Daniel French being the Secretary of Education.
Okay. So this, this leaves a space open to revisit masking more frequently.
Right, and only, this only works for the ten days, it's, then it's done, then they have, there has to be a new reconsideration.
Okay, okay.
It's just, there's no way we're going to, there's too many. There's too many different variables out there for people to look at, for our board to be considering, because we all feel different ways, so it's trying to come up with something that's short, sweet, and that we can can do. And I personally would, I mean, if you're, you've got your mask of any kind, would accept that.
Yeah, I did find CDC talk on face shields, but.
You want to offer that?
If you want to hear it.
Sure.
Uh, so face shields do not fulfill requirements that order face shields may be worn. Face shields may be worn in addition to a mask that fulfills their requirements, or the face shields may not be worn instead of a mask. A face shield is effective at protecting the person wearing it from splashes to the face, particularly the eyes. But face shields do not protect others from respiratory droplets exhaled by the wear. Face shield should, worn without a mask also does not protect the person wearing it from inhaling respiratory droplets.
Thank you.
Basically, they can come in around. And what you're breathing out can go out.
But they could also be worn with, for anyone that, that um, has a respiratory problem too. And with their doctors, they would have to accept that, we would have to accept that as well.
Well, not necessarily, that depends on the order. Um, if it's asthma, allergies, that's actually contraindicated. Um, it's one other conversation, and I don't want to talk.
Let's not get into that, all the ins and outs.
Yeah.
Okay.
So why, why do you want the children to, when they're sitting at the desk, they have to wear a mask all day?
They don't.
Doesn't say that in your motion?
It says it right in the state guidelines. It says when required, may be removed when needed for instructional or operational purposes.
What does that, what does that mean?
Well, if they need them off for them to, when they're sitting at the desk and, and doing that, that's fine, if you want to amend it and add that.
If we don't spell it out.
Okay.
Then they will be sitting at a desk all day long with a mask on.
Okay, so if you want to do an amendment and add that, by all means do. Is that what you would like to do?
Uh, yes, I would like to. So you're saying that we're going to revisit this September twentieth and then move on it again?
Yes.
And it's going to be up to us, not the school system, not the administration?
We are going to revisit it, we've only got a motion that's in effect until um, September twentieth.
So, so you're saying we will look at it, we will decide again September twentieth based on the data that we're given?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying.
You can add an amendment then.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Uh, state guidelines after ten days, if the data supports it for grades six through eight, they can take the mask off if at eighty percent, correct?
That's actually what it says in the, in the state guidelines.
I know.
Anyway, so.
Just want to make sure. Um, and then I would like to add the fact that if they're sitting at a desk, all grades, that they have the option to take the mask off if they feel comfortable taking it off.
Okay, so is that your amendment?
Yes.
Would you repeat it for me?
After ten days and.
Do you want it after ten days, you want it in the beginning?
After, after ten days, right, okay with that.
Because we're going to revisit it then anyway, so it doesn't matter.
At the beginning then, I would like them to, while they're sitting at the desk, to be able to take the mask off if they feel comfortable. Want that to be optional.
Do you want that distanced?
No.
At their desks and distanced? Or just at their desks?
At their desks, if, while they're sitting at their desks, just like at a restaurant. And we're going to get that from the administration, correct, in your motion?
Right, because I said, um, or could be shorter if data supports it on August thirty-first in response to the questionnaire.
Basically, it's the same motion, just different.
Keep in mind too, that if the data supported it and we needed it, we could also call a special meeting. You know, that's, that's a possibility as well.
I'm not sure, and Jack says, and raised, he might.
Pardon?
And Jack Breyer said this game reason.
Yeah, but he's not a member of our board. It's, it's like.
Neither am I, and I've been speaking. Neither am I, and I've been speaking.
I haven't allowed you to, you're here, you're our nurse. There's valuable information. So. Um.
Madam Chair, with all respect.
I wasn't advising you, Jack, because you're not part of our board, so.
But we are a stakeholder.
Do that.
And so you don't think that the use of your communities that send children to your school matter?
That's true, Jack, but you're not part of the board discussion and you know as a board chair and not a board chair, that that's not, not appropriate.
I, I, you can ask for permission to address the chair and I'm asking for that permission, you're denying that.
No, I'm just saying that.
You will, you have that discretion, ma'am.
Okay, I will give you one minute.
All right.
Because I know how long winded you are, Jack, and I love you.
This will be very short. Uh, the stakeholders in this decision extend past the citizens of Rockingham. I respect your decision, whatever it may be. But at the same time, you have to respect the fact that the folks who send their children here are stakeholders as well. And that includes Rockingham, Athens and Grafton who have voted for this, uh, for the state guidelines and heard exclusively from parents who said they would not send their children to a school that did not uh, have masking policies in place that adhered at least state guidelines. I am prepared to send note to parents, and I would actually urge you to send notes to parents advising them of your decision so they have time to make a decision as to whether or not they should send their children to a school that is not adhering to minimal state guidelines.
Okay, Jack, let me answer you quickly. Um, because that is why our motion says that we will follow them for the first ten days and try to get the data to see whether we have eighty percent um, in any of those situations where, so that we can have a special meeting if we need it based on that data. And we will revisit it on the twentieth to make, to look at what we have received for data and we can make a, an informed decision at that time. There is nothing that says here in this particular motion that we won't follow the state guidelines in the beginning.
I fully respect that, Madam Chair, the question unfortunately is, uh, when you have your second meeting of those children will already be in your school and will have already paid their tuition and won't have a choice as to whether to send their children. And that's why I would urge you to consider uh, adhering strictly to the state guidelines and move from there. Once you've, once you've got your eighty percent, uh, you'll be on the same basis that other schools are and there would be no question about where children, where parents should send their children. But it, but with your proposal in present, that's the question. And I, and I don't know if people are going to want to take the risk that you're going to make a decision adverse to the findings of the state.
I, I hear you, but I really think that, you know, that data will inform us and we'll be fine. Thank you, Jack, I, I would like for the, to go back to just the board. Okay. Um, we have, did someone second, I have a second, do you mind? Okay. Let's, we have a second. So can I clarify that, Jason, is that? You, I mean, because they have already, state guidelines tell us that when it's needed for instructional or operational purposes, I am looking at it as being basically the same thing. Because I think the teachers, if they're feeling like it's, it's not a comfortable time, that the, their direction could be that they need them on. You know, and, and, and off based on, on what they're doing in their classroom. So I'm sure that's going to happen because that would happen in any, any facility, so I just want you aware of that.
My, my, my point is that there are parents out there who have already told us they feel very uncomfortable wearing a mask at schools all day long. And a minimum compromise is if you say while you're sitting at your desk. Okay, I'm envisioning a classroom, you know, a full classroom, each kid sitting at their desk, getting taught, there's no reason why they can't take their mask off as an option, you know, for, 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 to, for, for you to say that, you know, how you're reading it is, i- if they're getting instructed, you might have, you know, it just leaves it up to interpretation, I don't want to do that, and that's, that's, I felt that's how it happened to us last year. And if we, when we left things up, I mean, you were here. And, you know, your motion was last year, open schools as soon as possible. And you kept restating it and restating it and restating it, and it ended up being like May fifteenth because we're waiting on the numbers, and I have no faith, you know. Kat already told us, we don't have the number, that we're going to wait on the numbers, we're going to come in, hopefully.
Nothing.
We, you know, we don't, we just, we just don't have the data right now to, and I think it's a good idea to revisit it and then pivot. There's, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with trying. No, I don't know. None, none of us here has the right answer, so.
No, and all of us, every one of us is trying to do the best that we can and make sure that our students are safe and that they're taken care of, and that's important. And I think, I think, you know, our parents are going to recognize that as well and and work with us. All right. And Jason, do you have any other comments?
No, just right now, I don't think we're actually productively getting anywhere on this discussion because it's, it's too far apart in both ends, that's all.
You all set to vote on this? With the amendment first? Okay, so the motion with the amendment is follow the state guidelines for ten days or shorter. Um, if the data support, which we would actually be following the, following it still because if it's eighty percent, you're going to um, be cutting it down, but we'd have to make an another motion at that time. Follow the state guidelines for ten days or um, shorter if the data supports on August thirty-first in response to the questionnaire. And it's to be reconsidered on September twentieth. Um, with the the students will be sitting at their desks, I should have that in there. Follow state guidelines for ten days or shorter if data supports on August thirty-four first in response to the questionnaire with the stipulation that while students are sitting at their desks, the students may remove masks uh, since that's an operational activity. And to be reconsidered on September twentieth. Is that restated, okay? Okay. Uh, Jason Benson, how do you vote?
I abstain.
Jason Terry?
I'm putting in my microphone.
All right, Mr. Benson?
He abstained.
No.
Okay. Megan?
Yes.
Okay. You voted against your amendment, okay, now then.
What just happened?
I guess. You voted against your amendment? All right, before I vote, does that mean that they may remove their masks for operational purposes? That's what I stated.
Sure sounds like.
Okay. Which is what it says in the thing, so I would vote yes. Okay. So the motion passes in that case. You're going, we're going to follow the state guidelines for ten days. We're going to put out a questionnaire to see if we can get the data by August thirty-first to find out if we can find out those eighty percent or not. And then, and if we get that, then we'll need to revisit it probably sooner, but we were going to, to reconsider it on September twentieth. And teachers may have their students remove masks at their desks. Basically the same as in, in the guidelines, which is instructional or operational purposes while there's, anytime they're sitting at their desks. Yes.
Can I close that, um, just so we're sending out, so the principals are sending out a survey reflecting exactly what the board wants, someone from.
I have a survey made up, which we can talk about here in two.
Or you can just, you can send it to me and I can send, if you send it to me, I'll just send it to the principals.
Let's make, make sure it's what the board wants. So do with one for students, you have student name, because you need the name to know if you've got several students in school. Vaccinated, yes, no? I want, and the date, I want if they are. I want students masked, yes, no? Prefer cloth masks, clear face shield, either, other concerns? And to the staff, unvaccinated, yes, no? The date, I want staff masked, yes, no? I prefer cloth, clear, either? I want students masked, yes, no? Prefer cloth, clear, shield, either, other concerns? That way we'll have the information and if we need to do a quick meeting before that, we can do that, if we don't have the data supporting the eighty percent, then we'll revisit it. then we'll revisit it on the 20th.
Okay. If you just send me those questions in email, I'll shoot them up to the principals.
Can do that.
That way it's not lost in translation.
Right. And they need to go immediately with the deadline of getting back on August 31st. So that this, we can have data immediately and we can have a meeting on the second if we need to have one. In fact, I think we probably want to schedule one for the second. And then we can cancel it if we don't have the appropriate data for that time. Does that sound reasonable for board members? Okay. And we'll schedule the next one because we're talking about. We're talking about setting the time already, which is not until 12:00. But if we set it based on this, we'll be okay. So we'll have one on the second at 5:30. If the data supports the 80% in any of the schools, we'll have it on September 20th. If not, or sooner, we can also do a special meeting if we get the data sooner.
Just to clarify, that's 80% of those eligible having received.
I have 80% of those eligible. That would include staff.
Well, staff actually doesn't come into the state guidance. Because the state already knows the staff is.
It's 80%, but the school says 80% of eligible.
Eligible students.
Does it say that? Let me make, make sure.
I could be wrong, Brian. Be sure. Because the state, because the state held those school vaccination clinics for staff and they all had a staff code. The state has those numbers so they know that the staff need the 80%.
When will we get those numbers?
It just says.
Number is for staff?
It says when vaccination made among students.
I don't even get them.
Two are greater than 80% of schools currently eligible population. It could be interpreted otherwise.
Yeah.
Why, why wouldn't we get them?
Because it's private medical information. You can't require.
No, I'm not asking who they are. I'm asking the same thing with kids. Why?
That would be nice.
Why, why?
Couldn't tell you.
I, I think most of them would not be unwilling to let us know that they had been. We're not requiring anybody to get it as a result of, you know, the questionnaire. There are certainly several reasons for not getting it. And that's based on personal preference. And we're not pushing that you have to be vaccinated. We're just trying to find out if we can get to the 80% level so that we don't have to have students masked all the time. And, and I think most parents would be very willing to provide that information. And it seems to me most staff members would be willing to provide that information to allow for, you know, that option of not masking, which we're having to try to go, go along with right now. Discussion of vaccine mandates for students and staff. Let me preface that with it's an emergency vaccine. And to require it at this point is not something that I'm comfortable with. Granted, it, the, it came out in the papers or in some kind of thing that the Supreme Court said that schools could. But it's usually handled by the state and it's not mandated by the state at this point. So anybody else want to comment on this?
It would have to be, right now, it would have to be something that in negotiations and have to be negotiated. And so legals are pretty much saying, leave alone. Don't go down that road. It's, it's not fully approved by the FDA. So therefore, just don't touch it right now. Let things work their way out.
Right. We, for staff, it would have to be negotiated. For students, it's not like the MMR and the others, which are, once it's approved, then we can put in a requirement if the state, you know, has no objection or any of that. But right at this point, probably not. Jason, do you have?
Yeah, I just, you know, Mr. Pratt, I just. It's confusing when you say those things because we were talking about, let's, let's vaccinate the children. But yet we're not able to, you know, we don't talk about the teachers and, you know what I mean? So it's, it's really perplexing for me and there's no logic behind any of that for me in my brain. I'm trying to figure that out. You know, it's, it's, it's disgusting. And I know it's part of the CBA. And I'm not for anybody vaccinating if they don't want to. But I'm saying, don't use the kids as pawns. That's disgusting. Thank you.
I don't follow. I've just, I'm having troubles following here.
Can I, can I interrupt this conversation, please? It's, you know, vaccination levels are what we're really interested in at this point. I think we're beyond being able to mandate. I think that's been answered. We can't do that, or I don't want to do that at this point even, even to go into it because it's not anything but an emergency vaccine right now. When it gets to the other level, it's like the MMR. Fine, we'll, we'll discuss it again.
But we can't mandate students to get it either. It's across, it's across.
It's an emergency.
Yep.
Yeah, it's an emergency one, okay. But we, we do want, is, am I correct? And the board wants that the questionnaire to go out to both parent, both parents and staff? Just so we get an idea of the percentages? So that we, you know, because if the staff isn't at that level either, then we've got the same problem with people in there because they're eligible. So we kind of have to know that. And that would go to somebody that the principals identify. And then you can tally the information and just give us tallied information.
Just remember that, sorry, I can't speak here. That's protected, that's protected medical information.
Well, technically, we can ask, just like restaurants are, are asked.
That's what I was going to say. You can totally ask and they can give you that information. But just making sure it goes to somebody who's going to keep it safe. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah, we, we were told.
That's why I said the principals can work with, you know, maybe and decide who's going to get that information. Because all we want to know is tallies. We do not want to know any individual names or any of that. That's not, not something we're interested in. We're interested in levels we can run the school safely at.
We were told at the last meeting that the nurse would give all that information as far as numbers, not names, and then be able to pass the law.
Well, but if we're rescuing the questionnaire, parents can do that to help us and, and make it safe for the other kids and for their students. So let's let them, let's, let's try it at least. Are we okay with trying that?
Sure.
Okay, and so we're basically. We, we've kind of agreed. We, we, that's kind of a directive for you to be able to do that because we've agreed on that. And as a small board, we don't have to vote as long as we've agreed. That's one of Robert's rules. Okay. We had a request for a student transfer to Rockingham, but the parent has withdrawn that request. I'm like, she, I got the text from them this afternoon. It's going to email this afternoon. And so that one's been, been withdrawn. All right, we're up to vacant board position and we are looking at a really long meeting here. What I'd like to do on that with the board's permission is I have had one very short letter applicant. I had one person that just withdrew their name from, from consideration. And there have been a couple of other people that have reached out and are asking about it right now. I'd like to give them the time to be able to do, do this and set up interview time during executive session for the next meeting because our meeting's running so late. Is that okay with, Jason, that okay with you?
Yep.
Jason Benson, that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, and Megan? Okay, so that's what we'll do on that. All right, we're up to appointments, resignations, if any.
Webinar.
Oh, the webinar. I'm sorry. Would you let us know about the webinar that's taking place on August 20th?
For grant training?
The grant trainings for, for boards, yes, so that we can.
Yeah, Flora said she would send that, I think she already sent that information out.
Okay.
For the, for the training.
I, I know she sent a request as to who was interested, but I didn't know whether you had any information that you could share with us.
Once we have the information, what we can do is we can add your names to the, to the people who are attending the webinar. So we're asking anyone who's interested in that grant training webinar that Flora sent out. Just respond to Flora's emails. We can put your name on the list. And so when they send the link out for the webinar, you guys are included.
Okay. Um, can I just take, kind of take an unofficial poll? Jason, are you interested in that? It's August 20th at 9:00 AM.
Yeah, that time when it works for me.
Okay, how about you, Jason?
Oh, I'll definitely be there. I don't think it's, it would be very nice of us to push to have numbers and Esther and stuff like that and how grants work and how to show up for a webinar.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Okay. And I, and I would like to attend. So basically, we're looking at three of us. And I will do the email responses back to Flora as well. Okay. Do we have any resignations?
No, we don't have any resignations.
Okay. And can you give us the appointments?
Yep, we have two appointments. One is an eighth grade social studies teacher. Jerome Lee, who was replacing Christie Jackson. And we have an elementary physical education teacher. And the last one was for the middle school. And then that PE teacher is for Saxon River and his name is Benjamin Picard. And he's replacing Johanna Wells.
Any questions about that before we?
I do. Are the people that I've been replacing, are they no longer working at the school? Are we going to be doing something different?
The two people they replaced in both resigned.
Can we have a motion for that, Ben?
I have one more question. Are they, do they fall in line with the chart as far as the step chart, year service, MABA, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, you have, um.
Yeah.
Both of them are coming in less. The new, two new hires are less than the other. That's what you were asking. Yeah, thank you. It came a little longer.
Good job.
Yeah, we should do laps, take turns.
Now, the fifth one is halftime or?
Based, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a shared. It's a halftime. PE teachers, you know, we're sharing with another SU.
Okay. Not shared Saxon River and, and Central?
No, it's Saxon River in another school in the, in the Wyndham Central District. We were able to work, work through something. So we're both looking for PE teachers. So we got a full time, but we're paying our share for that. But yes, it's not full time for us.
Okay, and at halftime, but is his benefits shared like equally or is that?
Um. I don't have the answer to that right now.
Okay.
It's everything's shared equally, so.
Okay, okay. Basically that answered it. Thank you. Okay, so can I have a motion for that?
I'm going to accept the appointments. Wyndham Park and Jerome Lee.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made to accept Benjamin Picard as the PE teacher for Saxon River. And Jerome Lee is the eighth grade social studies teacher for the middle school. I, are we all right to go ahead? We said, Jason Benson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Megan?
Yes.
Jason?
Yep.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. We've already talked about the time. Yes, excuse me, Madam Chair, his name is Ben Jerome hyphen Lee. Ben Jerome hyphen Lee. Yeah, Ben Jerome Lee. Okay. Stand corrected. Thank you. I just gave his last name, didn't I? Thank you. Two Benjamins, that's why. Thank you. Okay. Director's comments. Who wants to start? Jason Benson, you want to start?
Yeah, it's been a long meeting and I hope we can resolve things a little quicker in the future. But tonight I'm down in Kings and my wife, so it is what it is. Thank you.
Jason Terry?
My only comment is that you can be in favor of something, but opposed to it being mandatory. You can be against something, but not in favor of being banned. Thank you.
Great comment. Thank you. Megan?
So I would just like to get out that on August 28th, Parks Place is hosting a back to school community party outdoors. For families and community members, we have, I think we're up to 12 different organizations that work out of Parks Place Social Service. State agencies will be there and have tables and it's carnival kind of style. There'll be games and free prizes and each station will have resource information for families from our various partners at Parks Place. We're the next door neighbor to Central Elementary School. So when I comment on Carrie's campers out there making noise, it's literally, I can watch, I can watch my kids on the playground, but not on the window if I have to. But August 28th, it's a Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. It'll be, we have the permit to block off school street extension. I'm working on opening a fire hydrant if we can get the, the fire department to do that. But there will be games. There'll be free food. We, Cota and Cota is bringing the grill and we have 200 hot dogs and all sorts of stuff happening. But it's really just back to school celebration. Carrie Kennedy's kind of helped us and, and Central's going to be part of it as much as they can be. But really, it's a resource fair and just kind of trying to kick off the school year with a little bit of fun.
Okay. And to me, long meeting. I do appreciate each of my board members that held in there with all this discussion. It's difficult. There are feelings every direction, you know, and it makes it very difficult. As I think Mr. Pratt was the one commenting to me was that we are trying to satisfy as many people as we can, but it is impossible to satisfy every single individual with every single little, tiny little thing. And we're trying to do the best to keep our children safe, trying to get to a point where hopefully everything is improving. And this gives us some time to look at that and just keep in mind that that children are important to all of us. Parents, community members, board members, school staff, school administration, just really important. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? Or personnel issue? Just can I have this executive session added for it? Okay. Did you want to make a motion?
So I would, I would move that we accept the hiring of Kate Kane to her position at Central Elementary School.
I'll second it. Okay, Jason?
Yes. On that note, I gotta head home.
Sure.
Okay, Megan?
Yes.
Yes, okay, passed. The time and location's already been set. September 2nd at 5:30 if we have the data available at that time or a special meeting in between if we need it and to be reconsidered on September 20th at 5:30. With that, seeing no other information, it's adjourned to the 15th.